Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassas Common Council Meeting to Order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would just like to take a moment of silence for Alderman Herb Batley passed away this weekend. Herb was an Alderman in the 60s and 70s. Herb had a booming voice and a very strong opinion. And I think he made every Packer game except a few. And he was at the Ice Bowl, too. So Herb was a very, very strong Manassas person. Thank you.
Could we have the roll, please?
Yeah.
Alderman Sevenik?
Yeah.
Alderman Collier?
Yeah.
Alderman Kruger?
Yeah.
Alderman Zalinski?
Yeah.
Alderman Groudi?
Yeah.
Alderman Benner?
Yeah.
Alderman Nichols?
The first item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing for a special use permit at 336 Shoot Street. Director Schrader, could you fill us in a little bit on this before we start the hearing?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So at 336 Shoot Street, which is the old church across the street, located just west of Mims, if we all know where Mims is, has requested a special use permit to convert the first floor into three residential units. That would create the principal use of this building as primarily residential, having four units upstairs and then three units downstairs, for a total of seven apartment units. This did go to the Plan Commission. There was a public hearing. There were no major concerns that came about at the Plan Commission or at that public hearing. The one item that was discussed was the onsite parking, due to the site constraints. The site plan did only show nine parking stalls, where by code it would require 10 for principal multifamily residential uses within the downtown district. However, the applicant has since provided a signed lease with the neighboring Union Hall that states if should parking be needed, they can provide two additional parking stalls at an agreed-upon cost. So staff did not have any concerns, and Plan Commission did recommend approval of the special use permit as presented to allow seven-unit multifamily development at 336 Shoot Street with the following condition: that prior to issuing of building permits, a site improvement agreement must be recorded, and should parking issues arise, the property owner shall work with the Community Development Department to secure one additional offsite parking stall.
So at this point, if there's anyone who wishes to speak on the proposed special use permit, if you could step forward. Seeing no one, we'll call the public hearing to a close, and we'll move on to Item E: Public comments on any matter of concern to the city, if there's anyone who wishes to speak.
Christopher Evansen, 523 Broad Street. First, let me echo Alderman Taylor's comments regarding the passing of Herb Batley, best next-door neighbor we've ever had. I would remind everyone that the City Council Candidate Forum is tomorrow night at the Manassas Library, beginning at 6:00 p.m. But I'm primarily here to again speak on the issue of the Racine Street Bridge. I went back through the mayor's statement, which was submitted in support of his referendum veto. The cost of operating and owning the bridge wasn't really discussed. The cost of periodic redecking or remediation wasn't mentioned. The cost of ultimately replacing the bridge wasn't discussed. There was a paragraph in the mayor's statement that struck me as worth a bit closer review. He states, "Just as the Marina was an investment in Manassas' future, so is an improved Racine Street Bridge," end of quote. Let's consider: Has the Marina really been a good city investment? My answer is not really. The Riverwalk and transient docking are fine and of benefit to all residents. The Marina itself has operated six months a year, and for six months, it's empty. It's fenced off from residents and the downtown, and benefits the yacht owners who have their boats there. My belief is that a large percentage of the boats are not even owned by citizens of Manassas. Does it break even? I hope so, but I don't think it generates significant income beyond its expenses. Last, the boats in the Marina cause a lot of the wear and tear on the Racine Street Bridge that opens and closes at the boater's request. So is the Marina a benefit to the average Manassas citizen? I say not so much. Another quote, "The City of Manassas has made tremendous impacts throughout the downtown, Marina, riverfront, including implementing the slogan 'Your Place on the River,'" end of quote. I understand the need for a positive attitude about our city, but if the Marina really isn't that much of an asset, what has the city done? Much of what I've witnessed over my 30 years here is the city tearing down most of the historic downtown buildings, betting $40 million on an obsolete cold-fired steam plant, struggling to be a real estate developer in Lake Park and on Racine Street, and now we're going to own a bridge. A bridge that generates no revenue is, in fact, a regional necessity that the taxpayers of Manassas will fund. Last statement, "The bridge is a statement about the future of Manassas and an investment for the next generation to ensure Manassas remains a vibrant community," end of quote. A new bridge won't ensure the downtown's vibrancy. It will speed up traffic flow past the downtown. What can the city do to foster vibrancy? It can carefully manage our fiscal situation, continue to gradually reduce the $32 million in outstanding steam plant debt. This would help reduce our real estate tax burden, already the highest in the Fox Valley. Vibrancy is created by private investment and citizen participation in civic life. It is not something that comes down from on high in the form of yet another downtown plan, or slogan, or new bridge. Another argument I've heard is that we would have to go with the new bridge, or the city may be liable for the DOT planning costs of 1.1 million. I note this is always couched as a "may be liable." I doubt the city would be liable; I doubt the quoted figure. According to the minutes of the Public Works Hearing held June 5, 2017, Bill Bertrand of the DOT stated that the new bridge option J was only a city recommendation of the DOT, and the DOT would make the final decision. Thus, even if the city had wanted a new bridge, the DOT could have just gone with repair. The minutes state that the DOT selected option J. How can the city be liable for costs incurred based on a DOT decision? As noted, the city gave a recommendation, but the DOT had all of the power and the decision-making. A new bridge would bring construction dollars to the city for a couple of years; so would remediation of the existing bridge. The state would help with some dollars to cover eminent domain expenses for the private properties that will be permanently lost from our tax rolls, like Doc Larson's property. These are one-time benefits; the cost of bridge ownership is forever. I respectfully suggest that the council consider a resolution to bolster Resolution 1517, and advising the state that if the ownership of the bridge is transferred to the city, the city will simply not operate the bridge as a movable bridge. That resolution could be sent to the DOT, the DNR, Appleton, and other area yacht clubs and marinas throughout Lake Winnebago and Wolf River Watershed, Fox Locks Organizations, Radkey Construction, and any other stakeholders we can think of. This would serve to demonstrate the regional importance of the bridge and why the state should retain ownership.
Thank you, Mr. Evansen. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak today?
I'm Ken Fodoff. I reside at 1204 Cover Street. I would like to comment on the City of Manassas Downtown Vision Plan and the amendments. As an employee of Sunoco and a Manassas city taxpayer, and also a union president of Local 273, I would like to make sure that the city wouldn't try to force out Sunoco or Caveras to put up the office buildings as stated in the original plan. With bills pulling out of the area and leaving behind devastated communities, I think it would be irresponsible of the city to force out a viable business such as Sunoco or Caveras. We are fortunate that Sunoco is one of the few businesses looking to invest money right now in the paper industry, and in particular, the Sunoco mill located in Manassas. The effects of Sunoco being forced out will be felt by everyone in the community. Employees would lose their jobs; outside contractors at work and have people living in the community would lose work. The Ace Hardwares, Parker Johns, Luigi's, Pizza Hut, and so on would suffer because of the closure, not to mention the taxpayers and businesses, as they would see increases in their water, gas, and electric bills. This would not be a good thing for the city in any way. There are several empty office buildings right down this street. I don't think we need more office buildings. I'm not sure at this point if the amendments that propose graying out Sunoco and Caveras are being voted on as one vote or as separate issues, but I would encourage the City Council not to pass a plan without the amendments going through. I know the members of this council have said they wouldn't use eminent domain to force out either of the businesses, but this is a plan for future lawmakers going forward, and it would be good to have the original intent of this council to be directed in that plan, so there is no mistake going forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
Tim Jacobson, 732 Parrish Street. I just wanted to stop in here tonight to not only support positive votes on Item Number Four, the Public Works Facility, but to encourage a positive vote by everyone. I think this money is being spent on the community and for the community, and the community and all the taxpayers are going to benefit from this project. And I think it's going to just enhance and expand the momentum that the Blue Jay Pride, Blue Jay Nation has started, years past. And I think you can all rest easy, because it is in good hands with Mark Keating. I've known him from when we started this, 15, 12, 15 years ago. But I wish you all the best of luck, and Godspeed on this project, and I can't thank you enough for moving this quickly on it. I think it's really enjoyable to watch this happen. And be proud of this. You guys can be proud of this, because it's really going to help the community a lot. And I agree with Stan: Get that red out of here. The more blue, the better. Thanks. In fact, I've challenged the mayor and Nina to get red carts across the boulevard from our blue ones, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobson. Is there anyone else this evening?
Mark Langdon, 724 Warsaw Street, Manassas. I'd just like to say, over the weekend, there was an Alderman that has been telling some people that the state is going to pick up 80% of the operations and maintenance costs for the lift bridge. I was wondering if the council and city can show myself and the community that that is happening. I have not seen it, and as have others have not seen it. It was also mentioned that they were going to try to put timers on the bridge. I think, I hope everybody knows that federal law says that navigational waterways supersede any traffic, so you can't put timers on a bridge and have that decide when they want to go up and down. Boats have the right of way. So I know on Resolution R 1517, you sent a resolution to the state asking, you know, for help with the bridge, with payment. So if there's any truth to that, that there's going to be 80% funding for that, I was wondering if the council and City Hall could let myself and the community know that, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Langdon. Is there anyone else?
Tyler Damo, 57 Appleton Street. I know I've come up before you guys a lot of times in the past, asked, you know, for several years now, usually for negative, but I just wanted to, you know, give you guys one good comment that I'm really glad to see finally happen, which is what I've been complaining about for years now, with the little unleveling between the sidewalk and the water walkway for the park down by my house. There's a patch job there now, and it's finally seen work, and I'm just glad to see the city finally taking that on. I'm thankful to the Parks Department and to the Public Works Department for getting that done.
Thank you, Mr. Damo. Is there anyone else? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the Report of Department Heads, Staff, and Consultants, and the Minutes and Communications. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevenik? Maybe?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to receive Minutes A through H, and Communications I through L.
So motion and a second by Alderman Kruger. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a large number of things on the consent agenda this evening. The Minutes to Approve from the Common Council of March 5. The Board of Public Works Recommendations from March 5, recommending the approval of the Stormwater Action Plan. The payment to Pfeiffer Brothers Construction for the Fox River Loop-the-Lake Bridge Crossing at $154,257. The recommendation to award contract unit number 2018-3, the Architecture and Construction Management Phase 1 of the new public works facility to Grease Architecture and Myron Construction in the amount of $236,000. The recommendation that city crews demolish the building and restore the site at 133 Water Street. A recommendation by Nina Manassas Fire Rescue Joint Finance and Personnel Committee on March 7 to approve the hiring of one firefighter after April 6, and subject to Jim Peglow not returning to his line-staff position. The Plan Commission Recommendations from March 6 for the Certified Survey Map of 670 Lake Park Road for Community First Credit Union. The Certified Survey Map for 1737 Racine Road, Sunshine Real Estate, is presented allowing the lot combination of parcels 400762-2, 3, and 5. The Downtown Vision Plan as an advisory plan document for future development with the following changes: the removal of the designated future land uses of Sunoco and Caveras from the future land use map, and the addition of a preface to the plan, and modifying two of the land use policies as outlined in the consultant memorandum dated February 5, and changing the word "policy" to "guideline" within the land use principles. The recommended approval of the special use permit as presented to allow for a seven-unit multifamily development at 336 Shoot Street with the following conditions: that prior to the issuance of building permits, a site improvement agreement be recorded, and should parking issues arise, the property owner shall work with the Community Development Department to secure one additional off-street parking stall. The recommendation of the Special Administration Committee of 319 for the 2018 CIP Budget Amendment for the Loop-the-Lake Project, and the Special Board of Public Works Meeting from 319 for Change Order Number 4 for the Canopy Addition to the Loop-the-Lake Bridge Crossings. Does anyone wish to have any of those items removed? Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. First one would be Item 3, the payment.
Okay.
Next one would be 4, recommend to award for the new public works facility. The next one for myself would be 9, the Downtown Vision Plan, and then 11 and 12.
Okay. Does anyone else wish to have any items separated? Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 2 through 12, thank you.
2 through 12. So you'd like to do all of them separate? We can do that. Do we have a motion to approve the Common Council Agenda of March 5? Is that what I said?
A minute.
Okay, minutes from the Common Council. Oh, agenda, no. Alderman Sevenik?
I'll move for the approval of the Minutes. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have these all separated out? Okay. Seeing none, could we have a roll-call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call, 7-1.
Item 2 is the Stormwater Action Plan. Do we have a motion? Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion for the approval of the Stormwater Action Plan.
Second.
So motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll-call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call, 8-0.
Item 3 is the payment to Pfeiffer Brothers Construction for the Fox River Loop-the-Lake Bridge Crossing. Is there a motion? Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move for approval of Pfeiffer Brothers Construction Company Incorporated Contract Unit 2017-04, Fox River Loop-the-Lake Bridge Crossing, in the amount of $154,257. Payment number 4.
So motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll-call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call, 8-0.
Item 4 is the recommendation to award. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I would like to move that we award contract unit 2018-03, Architecture and Construction Management of Phase 1 of the new public work facility with Grease Architecture and Myron Construction in the amount of $236,000.
Did you pick one? Okay. There is a motion by Alderman Sevenik, and a second by Alderman Collier. Is there any discussion? Alderman Taylor? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll-call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call, 7-1.
Item 5 is 133 Water Street. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. After having several meetings and lengthy discussions on this particular item, I move that the city crews demolish the building and restore the site at 133 Water Street.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second from Alderman Kruger. Is there any discussion? Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Heather was lengthy discussion on this, and the taxpayers lose again. We increased the budget this year. Fires surpassed, actually increased it. And all we had to do was put this on a website to see if there was any takers on it. Simple. But we can't even put the car out with a sign on it that says "For Sale." And the taxpayers lose again.
Alderman Sevenik?
I can't let Mr. Taylor get away with a comment like that. This is extremely valuable waterfront property for the City of Manassas. It's too important for our community to lose this, and I think we need to retain it, especially if in the future we want to have a Riverwalk along the City of Manassas from the Loop-the-Lake Project through the downtown area and link that up. If we were to sell that, we could potentially lose that, and I would hate to see that happen.
Alderman Taylor?
And I can't let Mr. Sevenik get away with that, because never in this whole conversation did I ever talk about selling the property. It was the building.
You said it.
The building. Yes?
You just said it before.
It was the building, building, building. That's all that we were trying to sell here, was the building.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Director Jacobs, could you clarify one more time where the funds are coming from to accomplish
TIF 10. We had it in the budget for, in the TIF number 10, that was adopted last November for this calendar year. I believe the amount was, what, $5,500? $5,500 was in the budget for it.
And since they're TIF funds, they are not tax levy dollars?
They're not tax levy dollars. That is part of the base tax rate that all the taxpayers are paying for, correct?
Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll-call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call, 6-2.
Item 6 is Authorization to Hire One Firefighter after April 6. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we authorize the hiring of one firefighter after April 6, 2018, and subject to Jim Peglow not returning to his staff-line position.
Second.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Collier. Is there any discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. Chief Clone, could you tell us more about this? Thank you.
So Jim was promoted to Assistant Chief position as he was a captain, so in their, the union contract, they have, once they take a position outside the union within the department, they can, they have 30 days to decide whether or not they can, if they want to go back or not. So Jim's last day is, or would be, April 5 or 6, whatever it is, and then we would like to, the goal was to have, we have two other firefighters also starting. We were trying to get all three to start at the same time, so they can go through their recruit academy together, so instead of starting a couple and having one trail back a week or so. So we're trying to get all three firefighters to start at the same time.
Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Manassas, the Joint Fire Department is a great department, and as I've had discussions with the chief and other Aldermen about the reduction in this department from a chief and four deputy chiefs, and twice now, they've avoided that reduction, and I think we should be reducing our deputy chiefs to three deputy chiefs. And we have to make adjustments in this world, and there was an opportunity here twice now, and so I'm not voting against a firefighter, I'm voting against the structure of our department.
Just to clarify, there's a chief, a deputy chief, and two assistant chiefs?
Correct.
Any further discussion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, could you explain how the process would go if we were to make a reduction like that with the partnership that we have with the City of Nina for this department?
That's a great question. I'm not sure how that would, how that would work to try and make that reduction. I would assume that with, it would come through joint finance and personnel, they'd have to, or Fire Commission, and probably have to work with the city. Both cities have to work together to figure out how that would work. It's probably within our agreement, merger agreement somewhere.
So we have to modify that agreement to make that happen, do you think?
That might be a question for Pam. I'm not sure how that would work.
We were just discussing if it includes the actual number of firefighters within that agreement, and I haven't looked at that for at least a few months. I don't know when the last time you've looked at it, but...
Not at that issue.
So we would have to research that a little bit further.
Yeah, that's what I was afraid of, and that's a nonrepresented position, correct?
Correct.
So really, wouldn't, would, would any of that structure outside the represented firefighters, would that have to be negotiated with them if a change like that would make, from a leadership perspective?
I don't think so, not within the contract, I don't think. It would have to be probably something within the merger agreement, maybe, but not the union contract.
But, so with the partnership, that's something that would definitely have to be planned out and negotiated and agreed upon on both communities.
Yes.
To focus on that.
To focus on that. So, it's not anything that could just happen with the retirement of somebody or anything like that through attrition. We need to look at that and make that determination. Would there be standards through NFPA or anything like that that might amend any of that?
There are some. It would make some, probably would make some changes to shift commanders, maybe. They would maybe get pulled out of the union from that based on how many chiefs are at the admin level.
Okay. So, there are standards that pretty much.
Yep.
Should be followed with that.
There are some guidelines. Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven-one.
Item seven is the certified survey map for six seventy Lake Park Road. Is there a motion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This time, I make a motion to approve the certified survey map for six seventy Lake Park Road. This is for Community First Credit Union as presented for the lot consolidation and reconfiguration of parcels oh-seven, oh-eight, and oh-nine.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Zalinski. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call eight-zero.
Since the items were all separated, I assume that there was discussion on all those items. So, I just want to make sure that everyone has that opportunity to discuss if they wanted to since they were separated. Item eight is a certified survey map for seventeen thirty-seven Racine Road. Is there a motion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a, at this time, I make a motion for the certified survey map of seventeen thirty-seven Racine Road. And it references Sunshine Real Estate, LLP, as presented, allowing the lot combination of parcels oh-two, oh-three, and oh-five.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Kruger. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call eight-zero.
Item nine is the Downtown Vision Plan. Is there a motion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I make a motion to approve the Downtown Vision Plan as an advisory plan for future development with the following changes. Remove the designated future land uses of Sonoco and Culveras from the future land use map. B, the addition of a preface to the plan and modifying two of the land use policies as outlined in the consultant memorandum dated February fifth, two thousand eighteen. With C, changing the word policy to guideline within the land use principles.
Second.
And I heard a second, but I didn't hear who it was. Alderman Grady? There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. In the plan, there was some reference about the ci, the city taking on a, like a hall or something.
Director Schrader, did you want to comment on that?
Are you referring to the recommended banquet facility? Yes. So, I think that we would take that as a recommendation from the consultant, as their profession and market research. However, by this, this plan does not guarantee that that will happen. And if that, if that's something that the council would like to look into further after the adoption of this plan, we would do so at that point.
Is it, from reading it, it sounds more like they're looking at us taking on that role. And I don't believe that we as a city should be in business of doing something like that. So, I wouldn't necessarily want that in that report, but I wouldn't have a problem with us working with private enterprise and looking at that as an option. So, I see a head shaking. So, yeah, I mean, I still feel uncomfortable because.
I think most of staff agrees with you. This, again, is a recommendation from the consultant. It's not a requirement that we have to explore those things. If you wanted to make an amendment of some sort, you could.
No, but I would like, if anything, I'd like for at least my comments to be in the minutes that I reference this, is that it should not be necessarily for the city to do, but something for private enter, for the city to work at getting private enterprise to do.
Sure.
Okay. Then I'm fine.
Any other discussion? Seeing none? Oh, I'm sorry, Alex.
It was glitching out on me. Thank you. Just as far as this Downtown Vision Plan goes, I'll be voting no against this because I thought it was a waste of money from the get-go. Anytime a development comes to our area for the downtown, we bend over backwards to facilitate them anyway, and we'll change our plans. This just becomes a piece of paper on the shelf and is an expensive one at that. Thank you.
Director Schrader, would you like to comment on that? Or would you like me to comment on what the use of the plan is?
I, I can take that. So, I, I think the, the use of this plan is, is to not only have a discussion when developers come to us, but it gives us a marketing tool to go out into developers, that the city has done the research and that there is needs for, for certain areas within this plan. Without that, that documentation and that professional plan that sits on the shelf, we're kind of flying blind when we go out to developers and say, no, there is a, there is a need for condos or high, high-end residential units within the City of Manasha. Manasha can support that. Without that, it does, kind of puts us in a, in a bad predicament.
It also helps us as staff to know which developers to approach based upon what those recommended land uses are for those areas. So, this doesn't necessarily mean that this is exactly what will happen, but it's a guideline for Mr. Schrader and staff to be going out to developers and talking to them about potential developments with, in those sites. And I'm going to skip you, Arnie, for a second to let Alex respond.
And I understand that when it comes to being professional, when it comes to development, but I think that's more of a staff, staff's way of communicating with these developers, what we, we are looking for as a community and everything else. Because I think this will do more to push away development because they'll think, oh, we have this set plan, and you're not looking for what I want to give. I also have come across this multiple times from people asking me, how come we have all these set plans in our Downtown Vision Plan? We've gone against them in the past with storage facilities and everything else and things not aligning right, especially with the recent purchase of one of the other plants. I just see this as a roadblock. And it's, I think it's been used, plans in the past to say, oh, you voted for this plan. You must have wanted this development because it was showing out in this plan and this paragraph, and you voted for this. And I've seen that multiple times. And I've seen plans in the past, too, that have just been thrown to the wind because something bigger and something better happens, and the times change. I think they did a good job putting this together, and it's a good vision for what we want now, but I don't see it as a, it couldn't, I think the vision could change rapidly in the future. Thank you.
Alderman Collier?
Good evening. I didn't think I was going to say much tonight. But in regards to the two plants, when we had our downtown development, I brought up the, the deal that, yeah, that'd be nice to have whatever you build there down the road. But why would you ask two companies that are too, so vital to the City of Manasha? And they have jobs. They bring people in down. They spend money. But what's most important is until we, until they decide to leave, why would you push employment out of the city? And why would you ask yourself if you ever shut down those two plants because you pushed them out, how you're going to pay for your electric, gas? Every, everything else would just multiply many times in Manasha. So, I hope Culveras stays here for many years, and I hope Sonoco puts a lot of money in here and stays there for many years, and we can both work together and be successful. Thank you.
Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. The, the revisions take out the mill plans and, and the St. Patrick's green space because St. Patrick's Church had a concern with that. That's correct. On the approval of this, does not include any proposed or idea developments for those areas, correct?
St. Patrick's was left out. That was discussed at the Plan Commission level. As, as an advisory and as a planner, keeping that development in gives them greater flexibility in the future, should they ever want to sell. And again, I, I put that in that term because they are the private owners. The city is not looking at purchasing that property from them or pushing them out, using eminent domain or anything like that. So, as private owners, they are, they have their full rights to their property.
I'm, I'm just going to say that as a city, we, we do need a plan. I mean, we, we need some sort of plan on how we think we may move forward or, or some sort of vision at least to move forward. And that's basically what this is. I mean, if we don't have some sort of vision down on paper, we're just like the Winchester Mystery House. We're going to have stairs going nowhere, doors opening to the floors and falling two stories, you know, just absolute chaos. I mean, this basically at least, at least gives some sort of framework as to how to possibly move forward. And, and it, it's not set in stone. And of course, it changes with other opportunities that pop up. But then, as a city, we need to start having some sort of overall vision plan to start tidying everything else up. Otherwise, again, otherwise we're just, we just could be a total mess and just doing things partway and, and nothing cohesively happens when you do that. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
I agree with just about everything that's been said. And just to touch back on Alderman Zalinski's comments, in the past, these things have been used as tools against Alderman and, and for voting with it or something. It's in your face with it. And I know we got a fresh new administration with you, and certainly I hope that doesn't keep repeating itself up here. Also, I had recommended, and I would like to see, certainly Manasha has more re-tenant housing than anybody in the valley at about forty percent. And I had mentioned that any fresh new condo development would have quality parking along with that, house parking. And I think that's very important for a lot of individuals. These flat lots out here, and it's just not the quality of development we want in our downtown. Even though the next item, we're going to approve a, a seven-unit multifamily, or not, I shouldn't say we're going to approve, but it's the next one on the agenda, so. And again, we have a parking issue with that. We're parking in another lot. We're adding more cars to the downtown again without being housed properly, too. So, it's great to have a plan. It's great to have a vision. But I certainly hope in the housing end of it, it's quality and not quantity. Thank you.
Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Maybe my twenty years of working in government and ten years being on the Plan Commission and things I've done and seen, I, I way more relaxed about a vision plan because it is what it is. It's a vision plan. This, to me, is, it's a living document that gives somebody a place to go, a direction to go, to look for ways to create things to happen. Or if developers are looking to make something happen, it gives an idea. The reason it, to me, it's a living document is because exactly as Alderman Zalinski said, if somebody comes in and they have a different idea and they want to build, they have the ability to buy the property same as anybody. If it meets the zoning, they can build what they want to build. And then that vision plan changes for that area if they build something that isn't in the vision plan and it, and you just work with it. And that's, that's why we're here. That's what we do. And that's why you have the vision plan. And, and it changes, and it will change. And I just encourage everybody to certainly vote for this because that's all that it is, is a vision plan and a guideline to give folks something to work with. It gives community development something or, or direction so that they can go if he's doing, if they're doing some recruiting. We've been highly critical over the past ten years about community development, being proactive about reaching out to folks to come in and do, do development within the city. And yet, their resources and limitations that we provide them are very limited. You know, they could easily use more staff and be more proactive about it, but this is a proactive approach, and it gives them a tool to use when they're reaching out to somebody. And that's all that it is. And it's not to be taken as a literal Shelby document. It's just a vision. And I encourage everybody to vote for this. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven-one.
Item ten is a special use permit for three thirty-six Shoot Street. Do we have a motion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I make a motion to approve the special use permit as presented to allow for a seven-unit multifamily development at three thirty-six Shoot Street with the following conditions: prior to the issuance of building permits, a site improvement agreement be recorded, and should parking issues arise, the property owner shall work with community development department to secure one additional off-site parking stall.
There's a motion and a second from Alderman Kruger. Is there any discussion? Alderman Taylor?
You see, per your, like you have two cars. And it sounds like we're, we're going to allow for nine cars. And what if you have fourteen cars or with the tenants that live there? Two per unit.
The, the parking requirement by code is one and a half stall per, per unit. And it is stated per unit, so that doesn't matter if it's a, a one-bedroom apartment or a four-bedroom apartment. So, that is something that we could look into in the future. But all four of the apartment units on the second floor are one-bedroom apartments. And I believe as the plans, the preliminary plan showed on the first floor, those three were two-bedroom units, but they would have to get finalized before they got state approval.
It's in my district, and I know that there's more than one person living in the apartments upstairs. So, then you have two cars per, just because it's one bedroom, you still can have more than one person living there. There was supposed to be, and there is a separation between the two parking lots, and there was supposed to be some screening put in there. Will that be identified in this plan?
I, I don't know as if there was ever required to be screening between the.
Oh, there was a gap that was left for that, too.
Okay. I, it was not identified in this plan. I'd have to go back and look. This did get a special use permit in two thousand thirteen for a bar, and I would have to go look in, back at and see what that was approved. But I, I don't believe in the documentation that I've seen on that. It included any screening between those two, and nor does this, does this include that either.
Okay. Was that talked about at Planning Commission? Is there some screening that has to be done between the properties?
There would be screening within the transitional area, which is the ten feet to the north buffering the residential properties. So, there would be the additional landscaping planted along the north property line. I think there's currently a fence there. But nothing was noted along the west property line between the two parking lots.
Okay. If you take a look at that, though, I'll do some, walk out the back door and take a peek at it. I'd like to compliment the Beakler family for bringing this property and investing a lot of money in this property and bringing it up to a quality property in the downtown. Thank you.
Did Alderman Collier say anything when he left?
Yeah, I already says that we have to, so let's just vote on this. He said he can't make this.
Oh, he, he wants to be, he wants to abstain from this vote?
Oh. He said it'd be that, too.
Oh, okay. Is there any? Is there any further discussion? So, we would be taking a roll call then on the special use permit for 336 Shoot Street. Item 11 is the 2018 CIP budget adjustment for Loop de Lake. Is there a motion? Did you want to do it? Alderman Sevenek?
Thank you. I'm going to read the same motion that came out of committee, if that's all right.
Sure.
Because it's kind of just a one-liner on here, and staff had made a recommendation that the council, so my motion will be that we approve the 2018 CIP budget adjustment in the amount of $70,400 with the funding coming from the revenue source highlighted above, which was the first option.
Second? And that also included the color being blue?
Yeah, and also the color.
Is there any discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, I don't... Alderman Collier? So, a motion by Alderman Sevenek and a second by Alderman Collier. Any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 6-2.
Item 12 is Change Order Number Four for the canopy addition. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevenek?
Yes, I'll take this one also, then, Mayor. This is from the Board of Public Works, and it was for Change Order Number Four, canopy addition, that the council be in favor of this project for the Loop de Lake Bridge Crossing.
Second. There's a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 6-2.
Item I is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll for March 7 through 15. Is there a motion? Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of 3/7/2018 through 3/15/2018 in the amount of $6,956,846.72.
There's a motion, a second, from Alderman Grady. Is there any discussion? Seeing...
Yes, sorry.
Too late.
I actually called in because I don't want to waste a lot of time, which I'm probably doing now, but I wanted to bring something up to the council because it wasn't something that I necessarily was aware of because of the fine, tiny, tiny printing on the bottom here. But if, at some point, there was one of the items that I kept seeing coming up and I wasn't sure what it was about, and she has notes on the bottom there that explains some of these, you know, such as child support. You can't necessarily put that on the check or whatever, so you weren't necessarily really sure what that particular one was about and things like that. So, I never noticed that before, so I just, I don't know if the rest of you did or not, and I just wanted to make you aware of it. And I told her that I would do that tonight.
Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Item II is the beverage operators' license applications. Do we have a motion? Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve the beverage operators' license applications for the 2017 through 2019 licensing period per the memo dated March 13, 2018.
Is there a second? There's a motion, a second, by Alderman Grady. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Item III is a contract to administer the retail food and recreational programs for the Wisconsin Department of Ag, Trade, and Consumer Protection. Is there a motion? Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve the contract to administer the retail food and recreational programs for the Wisconsin Department of Agri, Culture, Trade, and Consumer Protection between Wisconsin Department of Agri, Culture, Trade, and Consumer Protection and the bridges of the Fox River Consortium, Cities of Manasha, and the Pier dated April 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019.
There's a motion, a second, by Alderman Collier. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Item IV is a motion to reconsider Resolution 418. I don't know if we want to have Director Jacobs explain what's going on before we move forward on this.
As you will recall, two weeks ago, when we had brought this to your attention for making a motion on this resolution, some additional information has come out since then, and the City of Appleton has had a separate discussion with the other nine municipalities in the Fox Cities groups that are part of the Fox Cities Room Tax Commission on this. We met as a group last week, and then we've met also again today on this, and the City of Appleton has had final numbers now in Exhibit A in the cooperation agreement for the reimbursement. That's to be included in the borrowing resolution for the revenue bonds. So, what has now come out in actual print is now showing up on Exhibit A that you remember previously that that page was left blank. However, the nine communities were, had been in agreement with removing, making sure that the reimbursement was not to include Phase Four, Phase Five of legal fees that were incurred by the City of Appleton on behalf of the Appleton Redevelopment Authority, and then the spare financial fees for $10,000. And then, the City of Appleton also had requested a reimbursement for accrued lost interest costs since they were funding out of their, basically their checkbook balance for the last few years for the construction of the project. So, what now has happened since that time is Appleton has now dropped, asking for all the legal fees. They've totally removed that out of what they're asking for in the closing costs for their borrowing, for their bond document, which will be out on sale on May 1. However, they have left in the accrued lost interest costs for reimbursing them for the equivalent of interest costs on what they've out-of-pocketed for the last two years, roughly a little over $30 million. And the nine communities have met and agreed to those terms to get this deal done because interest rates are rising, and the longer this gets delayed means that it will be an additional cost to all the communities. The way this is funded is this will be going through the reimbursement, through the borrowing proceeds that will be issued here in the next couple of weeks, and so it will not be something that the nine municipalities or City of Appleton will be out-of-pocketing. It'll be part of the borrowing costs, and then it'll be reimbursed back by the room tax dollars that all 10 communities are contributing. So, we're asking tonight for a reconsideration on this because we had made a contingent motion two weeks ago that had excluded those other items, and they now have stricken those out of there. So, all that is left as part of Exhibit A is just the accrued lost interest cost for the $285,130, which all the communities have now agreed to, and it now shows up on a piece of paper where you actually can see the numbers, which weren't there two weeks ago.
Alderman Sevenek?
With that being said, and John being our representative from this community, and the nine communities in agreement, move that we reconsider Resolution R418 and the supporting documents along with the final changes made to Exhibit A and update cooperation agreement as presented.
So, there's a motion, a second, to reconsider. What the motion would do is bring the original motion back on the floor, and then we can amend it the way that you had just read it. So, we have a motion, a second, to reconsider. Is there any, I always forget if that's debatable? Is there any discussion? Seeing that there's none, we'll take a roll call on that.
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
So, now the original motion is on the floor, and, John, how do you want this amended, or do you have that stand?
No, but I think I could figure it out that we, now that we've had those restrictions, are on R418 that we now support the documents along with the final changes made to Exhibit A of the updated cooperation agreement with all the surrounding communities.
So, there's a motion and a second from Alderman Benner.
To amend R418.
To amend for, yes.
And we vote on the amendment, and then we vote on the full resolution.
Yes, I'm just trying to make sure that Debbie has something there for the minutes. I was hoping it was in the memo, but it's not what you just read, is it?
This was the other motion.
Here. Get home.
You got, oh.
That's my copy that I...
Oh, okay, right there.
So, should I just put to amend R14?
Sure.
Is that, okay.
Okay.
That's what they're voting on, is to amend R14.
So, it's to amend it as...
You go back to the original motion, which was to approve, and that was to approve R418 authorizing the execution and delivery of documents related to the Fox Cities Exhibition Center project, and then you can just...
So, you want to remove...
So, you'd be removing this...
That, and then adding...
Correct.
This, okay. So, if you agree with this, Stan, what the attorney is recommending is that we take the original motion that's in the minutes that says a motion to approve R418 authorizing the execution and delivery of documents related to the Fox Cities Exhibition Center project, and then remove that next sentence, the issuance shall not include the following items, and add... Supporting documents along with the final changes made, and supporting documents along with the final changes made to Exhibit A of the updated cooperation agreement as presented. So, the way that it would read would be if we, if we accept the amendment, it would read motion to approve R418 authorizing the execution and delivery of documents related to the Fox Cities Exhibition project and supporting documents along with the final changes made to Exhibit A of the updated cooperation agreement as presented. Does that make sense? Okay. So, first thing we're doing is we're amending it to say that, and then we'll vote on the whole thing. So, right now, what's on the floor is the amendment. I don't know whose pages I have and whose I don't know.
I have all of them.
Okay.
I didn't hear that. So, I came immediately, so I won't forget.
We could have a roll call vote on the amendment.
Okay, first one, and then that's changed. I have a second, where am I here?
There you go, that's the amendment.
I don't mind, thank you.
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
And now, we have the motion on the floor as amended, as I just read it a couple minutes ago. Any further discussion?
Okay, so now, this one is...
Alderman Taylor?
Have we, we just jumped to item five here?
Nope, we're not on item five. We're still waiting to vote on the resolution...
I just saw that pop up there, and I had no word on item four, and I saw item five pop up here now, so, okay.
So, we need a motion to approve this?
Yep.
No, it's...
So, we already have that. That's, that's part of the reconsideration.
Oh, by Alderman Sevenek and Benner? Oh, okay.
So, all we need is a roll call vote on the amended motion.
Which we did, on the amendment was...
Yep, and now it's as amended.
Oh, okay. Just on the motion, now it's as amended, okay.
Yes. And that...
Do you want me to put as amended on there?
Sure.
Okay?
There we go.
All right.
Okay. Perfect. Item Five is the offer to purchase 87 Racine Street. Alderman Sevenek?
Well, actually, that kind of reads funny, doesn't it? Because we're actually accepting the offer to purchase.
Sure.
Right. So moved.
So, there's a motion. Is there a second? There's a motion, a second, to accept the offer to purchase on 87 Racine Street.
At the full price, I should...
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Mayor.
Sure. Alderman Sevenek, maybe? There you go.
I just wanted to make certain, I should have thrown the dollar figure in there, too, but the council already agreed to this price. The council also agreed to certain terms of this property, and the buyer has accepted all those and actually accepted this 100%, which is rare.
Alderman Taylor?
I didn't see anything in the documents here, Mayor. You know, this property has quite a storied past, and if we're selling the property, and portion of this property was taken by eminent domain, so there has to be a public purpose with this property, how we're addressing that, the eminent domain and the public purpose of this property.
Comment?
Public purpose comes into play if the city was purchasing it. The city already does own it, and it is selling it, and so therefore, according to the law, what the city needs to do is sell it at fair market value, and that's it.
And the taking, and the taking of the eminent domain, isn't there a public purpose that has to be met then with that?
The city isn't taking anything. It's selling the property, so it, that wouldn't come into play in this particular instance. It probably did when the city, and I'm not sure how the city acquired it, but part of it might, may have been acquired through eminent domain, and then that would have occurred with the original acquisition by the city. But then, when the city turns around and sells it, the only requirement, only requirement is that it be sold for fair market value, or something that, if it's going to be less than fair market value, then there needs to be a public purpose involved in selecting the price. So, you know, as an example, sometimes the city would determine that it's, it needs to sell a property for less than fair market value, for a dollar or something like that. Occasionally, that will occur because it wants development, and so that would be the public purpose that's served in selling it for less than fair market. But as long as it's fair market, then that's the only requirement.
Okay, thank you very much.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Director Schrader, could you provide a summary for those viewing what we're discussing here?
Yes, so the property across from the post office, kind of known by us as 87 Racine Street, has been vacant for years. Used to house, I believe, two old gas stations that were tore down, and I believe they were blighted as part of that TIF project. That site was cleaned with the... from the environmental contaminations, and since then, it has been sitting vacant. The city did come in a contract with a listing agent last fall, so we've had that listed with Newmark Grub Pfefferly since October, November, I believe, and the council did set the asking price of $75,000. So over the last month or so, we've been kind of negotiating with the potential buyer to get to where we are today, and they're looking for a few requirements: securing financing, getting corporate approval, access onto Racine Street that the director of Public Works does not believe would be an issue, as well as the city... as a city, we did add a contingency or provision that the construction must commence within 12 months of closing. Attached to the offer to purchase is a preliminary working site plan that would still have to go through City Plan Commission, meet all the requirements there. But as you can see, it's a small 1,500-square-foot building with a drive-through, onsite parking, things like that.
And what would happen if construction did not commence within 12 months of the closing date?
I would probably defer to Pam. Sometimes we could add it in there. We'd have the option to buy it back at that same price. I'm not sure... that's not specifically to that language, so I'm not sure if Pam would have something to add to that.
Did you want to comment, Attorney Captain?
Currently, there is no provision for what damages would be incurred if construction was not to commence. So if that was something that you wanted, you would add that. Otherwise, it would be considered a breach, and just a breach of contract, and then we'd have to determine what the... what the damages are relative to not having construction commenced, which I guess would probably be something to the effect of taxes or something like that. But that would have to be proven in court. So there is no provision in here with regard to that. This is an offer to purchase. It isn't something that would be expected that the buyer would put in there.
At what point could we put it in or place a condition on that?
Go ahead.
That would be a counteroffer, and it... you would be identifying what the penalty is for construction not having commenced. As Community Development Director Schrader mentioned, it could be a right to repurchase the property. Typically, if you ask a Realtor about that, a Realtor will say that is oftentimes something that a commercial entity would have ... obviously have a problem with, because if there was some issue that came up, it may be difficult for them to get financing or something like that, because the finance company or bank or lender would not be real happy if all of a sudden something happened and construction hadn't commenced. And again, this is construction commencing, not being completed, so there's a difference there as well.
I do feel strongly that it's something we should consider in the event that the property is purchased and therefore, in private hands, I would hate to see it... I hate to see construction not happen for whatever reason, and then that property owner then has an opportunity to sell a property. So for lack of a better idea at the moment, I'm going to throw a motion out to counteroffer that we do put a provision in there that allows us to buy back the property if that construction does not happen within 12 months.
I'll second.
There's a motion, a second to counter. I just wanted to let everyone know that Scott is here this evening. I forgot how to pronounce your last name, Scott, but if anyone has questions for the potential purchaser... and Sam's looking like, "Where is he?" He is here this evening. Alderman Sevenek?
Thank you, Mayor. I've been a part of this whole process as far as the lot and the changing it with the hopes of something finally being put back on the tax roll. I like this idea. I like this plan. I think it's going to be an asset to the community. Talking with the community development, it sounds like the developer is actually very anxious. I like Alderman Nichols' motion, but it sounds as though he's ready to go as soon as we sell this property and it goes through planning and everything. So I would encourage everyone to vote for this. I think this is a good deal for Manasha.
Attorney Captain?
If I can just mention something with regard to the counteroffer. Really, this is something that should have been put in right at the beginning when the city was deciding what to put in the listing agreement. It was not in the listing agreement, and so this is something that you're just throwing at the person who is purchasing it. City did not have that in the listing agreement, so if all of a sudden this person decided to walk away, we would owe the money for the... to the Realtor for getting somebody who was ready... assuming ready, willing, and able to purchase it at the asking price. And if all of a sudden, this is something that pushes them away... I'm not saying it will, but if it was something that would push them away, just so everyone's aware, we would be... we would owe the percentage to the Realtor.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote on the amendment?
Right, is that what the...
Yes.
Okay, we're going to take ready?
Yes.
Motion carried on, roll call five three.
So now we have on the floor the motion as amended. Is there any further discussion? Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're just voting on the sale of this. We're not... site plan. We've got some pretty good drawings here. We're not approving any of that. It's just a sale price.
No, the site plan would come back through...
Planning?
Plan Commission. It probably will not come back through Common Council. It would probably just go back through Plan Commission as a site plan approval, as long as it meets all the requirements.
So it's not coming to the council at all?
Site plans typically would not come to the council.
Because there's some issues that I see with that, and I've been contacted about, too, so... especially with the traffic situation.
I would bring those to Director Schrader and let him know of those, and we can also relay those back to the developer.
And the dumpster on the corner of First and Racine.
We've already talked about that one, and we would hope to have that...
There's some issues here with the neighbors, and I just want to get out in front of that. Thanks.
Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for Director Schrader. There is a caveat that went along with this lot about it not being used for parking, and I was just curious about the amount of parking stalls that are there. This is an unusual lot. They try to make things work on, and it looks pretty good, but is this the amount of parking stalls that's required for this type of development, or is that a way of utilizing the land to the best of its ability?
Without seeing a final floor plan and a final site plan, I cannot comment if that's the actual amount required. However, being a franchise owner, the purchaser does have a few other locations, and so he kind of understands what he needs for parking. And I know that was his... a large concern from him that he did have enough parking for what... for what he's seen in the past to provide onsite.
So really, we'll be vetting this, or the Plan Commission will be vetting this when it makes it to that point?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Well, it sounds like we're getting a little latitude here to talk about the site plan, correct?
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
A little bit.
With the amount of accidents on Racine Street, and we've talked about this, the chief has brought it up to us, to have ingress egress on Racine and First Street would make most sense, but to open that up, that short block between the two streets to have access in the middle of that lot, I'd rather see him go into a controlled intersection out on First or out on Broad Street. So certainly an issue there. To open up another gap, other places around town, we haven't allowed that, out by the CVS store. So I'm just talking out loud here, and some things that have been brought to my attention along with the dumpster. And right now, do we need that many parking stalls? You know, I've always liked if we can soften, especially a main corridor like that, with a nice building and a campus, and I would hope that there's some amenities outside for people. The bike trail goes right past there, and I hope there's amenities outside for public eating and the nice weather, and I certainly hope the campuses are really nicely screened and developed on such a high visible area. So just my thoughts out there on that. I don't need any response on that, just putting them out there.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I understand our desire to grow the tax base and sell available properties. At the same time, I am a little conflicted with this proposal for a couple reasons. The caveat of parking was already mentioned. The community has had a strong desire over the last few years that this particular piece of property not become a parking lot, and this council has made that a priority as well. And so the first thing that struck me was the amount of pavement on the property. And then, secondly...
We're talking about this... we're talking about selling the property, not Plan Commission stuff. We go to a Plan Commission meeting and discuss this. I don't want... this is not the right time. Thank you.
Although I did allow some other people, your point of order is well-taken, so we should be talking just about the offer to purchase at this point, and those other items could be brought up in Plan Commission. Any further discussion?
They're all good points.
Do we have unanimous consent to hear from the developer?
Sure.
And I'm going to need you to come up front, because otherwise, no one's going to be able to hear you on the tape.
I'm looking pretty nervous.
Good evening. My name's Scott Chitko. I represent Summit Combined Properties, and I just want to address that it's not a parking lot. It's a place of business, and we're excited about the opportunity to be in Manasha. It's a lot of good things going on here, and I think what is going to be coming would be great for the city to have. It's a unique property, to say the least. It's a very tight size with less than a half acre, and we've spent a lot of money presenting alternative options to Sam, working with Sam and the mayor, and, you know, we wanted to bring something that's going to be great to the community. And I think this is, and based on the uniqueness of the site, I'm very proud of what we come up with, and I hope to get your support for it, because it's good stuff.
Alderman Kurgar?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to mention, this piece of property has been available for a very long time. We've had a lot of debates about it, and in fact, we thought that we weren't going to be able to sell the property without taking the two houses right next to it also, to be able to get someone interested in it. And now we have someone who's going to be able to utilize that plot, the exact same size, without disturbing the homes next door, taking off, you know, a couple residential homes. I think it's a great, great plan. We have someone who wants the property, who's going to be able to utilize it in as square footage as it sits, and I would highly suggest that we go ahead and approve this. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Will there be opportunities outside for people to eat outside and cycle... bicyclists?
Yeah, we intend to probably have a couple outdoor seating areas. It is a quick-serve opportunity, so, I mean, it's... I don't see people having, obviously, alcoholic beverages or anything like that out there at all.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, we... it's... we want to create a good vibe. We understand the opportunity that we're going to have with the other campuses downtown and being able to walk to and from, biking. Excited about the boating area, you know, the marina, and being able to deliver there as well. And just to address the egress into Racine Street, the roundabout also presents some challenges, so we are trying to protect ourselves because of what we're looking to do. Again, you have things happening two or three years out that we're just trying to insulate our risk against. So in the perfect world, yeah, I get what you're saying, but I don't live in that perfect world, unfortunately.
Okay. So, you know, the friendship trail goes right past your front door for cyclists.
Perfect. Looking forward to gaining many new friends.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
And he only lives two blocks away, so he might be your best customer.
Awesome. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Scott.
Motion carried on, roll call seven one.
Item six is a recommendation from the Protocol Committee. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevenek?
Yes, there was one item that was asked by Alderman Nichols to go back to the committee, and we revisited that and revised it, and it was unanimous. And so I'll move that at this time, that we go along with the 2018 and 2019 Common Council considerations of the rules of the Common Council and the mayor, as drafted by the ad hoc Protocol Committee, as its rules of order for the session.
Is there a second? I'm not sure who you're going to pick. Alex, okay. So just so everyone's clear, what this recommendation does is this would be the resolution that we start our next Common Council with. Someone on that next Common Council would put this into a resolution form and create the rules for the next Common Council with this recommendation. So these don't go into effect until after the next election. Do we have any discussion?
When is that?
April 3rd, I believe, right?
Not well up in the...
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Based on previous discussions about this item, it was my understanding that when the final recommendation came forward, that we would not only have rules of the Common Council, but that it would include a code of conduct, a code of ethics, and some form of penalties and sanctions that can be used in the event that the code of conduct is not followed. And so seeing that those items are not included in this recommendation, and I, being that it's March 19th, don't envision them coming forward anytime soon, I cannot support this recommendation at this time.
Alderman Sevenek?
Thank you, Mayor. To help address that issue, as far as that goes, it was the committee's feeling that those areas are already covered under state statute, and so therefore, there was no reason for us to... And so therefore, there was no reason for us to go any further with that.
That was regarding the code of conduct. The code of ethics, we did pass at a previous council meeting. Any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote please?
Motion, Kieran, on roll call 6-2.
Item J is held over business. It is a owner request that the city repurchase 995 Brighton Drive. Attorney Captain, did you want to comment on that?
Since the last meeting, I did, I do have some additional information with regard to the city's obligations, so to speak, or liabilities as a former landfill operator at that property site. I think I did mention that, and as an owner of property, if there was a health, safety issue that would be in need of immediate attention, an owner is required to take action. That owner then, after action is taken, perhaps may decide to pursue reimbursement of expenses that were incurred in any type of a cleanup, if that owner was not a responsible party. At the property on Brighton Drive, we do know that the city of Manasha operated a landfill for a period of time. It is suspected that there were other entities or persons that also deposited items at that property. Since the property is currently owned by Mr. Gary Avalone, if there was anything that came up that was in need of immediate, in need of addressing immediately, he would be the responsible one. If the city did decide to acquire the property from Mr. Avalone, as far as, you know, would the city increase its liability or not, it would to a slight degree in that as a current owner, an owner is responsible if there's a, you know, immediate health, safety issue. And so from that perspective, if the city did acquire that property, the city would have to address that and then seek reimbursement from potential responsible parties, depending on who it was, after we did some investigation, that deposited those, whatever it was that needed to be cleaned up. Of course, at this point, we don't know anything. I did review all of the DNR records. There were occasions where there, I think it was in 2008, there were homes that were built near the landfill. The DNR did have a concern. There's some documentation in the DNR files about a possible risk for occupants in, in those homes. But there, the conclusion that was reached by the DNR that there was likely no methane risk for the construction of, of those homes, and I am aware that, that they were constructed. The documentation that I reviewed had indicated that the city used it to deposit things such as concrete and building items, things like that, asphalt, et cetera. And that, that's what I had seen in, in the file. And we did go through the whole file. I also did consult with attorney Art Harrington, who is an environmental legal specialist. If the city did decide to acquire the property, and there is documentation in the DNR file to this as well, what it does for the, from the city's perspective is that by ownership and control, the city is able to manage future use of the property in order to mitigate any risk that a third party will engage in some development activities. And then, of course, if someone did want to engage in development activities, I believe that I did inform you that there is, that the current owner by law is not able to just go ahead and, and develop a property such as that. There is a process that one needs to go through if someone does desire to develop it. And what that does is obviously triggers some investigation, possible remediation. It depends what the development would be. I am not aware...
What is your point of order?
But for the benefit of the taxpayers, should we be going, we should be going into closed session to talk about the purchase of this property?
We are not releasing anything that's confidential at this point.
Correct. There's nothing confidential.
So wouldn't it be a need to go into closed session? At this point, we could at some point if we wanted to.
If, if the city...
We really need to limit our discussion on this. And we, it's a, it's a, it's a...
You could, you could make a motion.
Very important piece of property.
I have my mic on. I'd like to make a motion.
I'll yield to Alderman Sebanek.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Taylor. Yeah, Alderman Taylor and I have been around the block for a while. We, you can't even imagine our uncomfortableness right now, even going on as far as we did on this. We have a motion, we had a motion, I thought, last time that we decided, was that in committee? That, because I know it came from the, the Park and Rec Board.
There was a motion.
We have no purpose or use for this property. It's, Alderman Zalinski made a motion to take it out of the potential of maybe part of a, the park plan, but it had no purpose for the park plan. So we have no interest in this property, and I don't even want to start to discuss it. So if the owner is looking for us to purchase the property, we have no purpose for it. So I'd say we're not interested. I don't know how you want that into a form of a motion, but at this time, we have no interest in purchasing 995 Brighton Drive.
Is that a valid motion?
That's fine.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second by Alderman Taylor and Alderman Zalinski.
Yes, thank you. Isn't this in the vision plan still?
It is.
So...
His motion is still valid.
I know his motion's valid. I just, it just reoccurs to me. I tried to.
It's not in the vision plan.
But everybody told...
It's not out, it's in.
It's in the vision plan. I went through a lot of debate over this.
I swear we took it out of the vision plan. Well, that's how I knew it.
Just, just because it's in a vision plan doesn't mean that we have to acquire it or have to take action on those things. So there's a motion, a second on the floor. I forget what the motion was already. Now I've got two other people. Alderman, Alderman Nichols?
You just said have no interest. No interest. In purchasing.
Alderman Nichols?
I'm, I'm waiting.
Alderman Nichols has the floor at this point, please. Alderman Collier, Alderman Nichols has the floor right now.
Thank you.
Alderman Nichols has the floor right now. Thank you.
When we last discussed this, we agreed that there was a responsibility to conduct our due diligence on this manner, matter, which is what the attorney has done over the last two weeks, in my opinion. And she was in the process of telling us that. And if we expect to make an informed decision, then I think it is imperative that we hear her out and make a decision based on the appropriate information. So I will not support this motion.
Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, first, Alderman Nichols suggested that she hears out the rest of the attorney's dialogue. And if the attorney would like to finish it, I'm more than happy to give the floor to let her finish, if that's the desire.
I'm just trying to protect the city.
I understand, but I, I can't imagine anybody doing a better job protecting the city than the attorney. You know, it's so if...
Sometimes the best thing...
Hold on, we, we have one person on the floor at a time. So...
Mr. Mayor, would you like the attorney to finish this thing?
Well, I guess what I would ask is, we could have a motion to hear from the attorney, or we could have a motion to go into closed session if we feel that that's important, but we'd have to wait till the end if we would do that. Or we could continue with the...
I, I have two questions, but again, Alderman Nichols wanted to hear the rest of what the attorney had to say. And if we want to take it to a motion, I'm fine with that, if, if she'd like to make that motion.
I don't have a problem with the attorney finishing, but please realize where we are.
Or should I just ask for unanimous consent to hear from the attorney? Okay. Is, are there any objections?
No objection.
Okay. Attorney Captain, did you want to finish?
I just was asking the mayor if he wanted me to address what would be in closed and open session. In an open session, whether or not a city would like to purchase a property that is decided in open session, what is decided in closed session, or you have the ability, you don't have to at all. Closed session is voluntary. But generally, it is used when there is a possible, you know, if you're negotiating something and you don't want to show your hand. So for negotiation purposes, that's usually, particularly as it relates to purchasing property. But actual discussion about whether or not you wish to purchase a parcel of property, or if you are interested at all, that would be something that should be in, in open session. In discussions with an attorney, that is if there's a threat of litigation or something to that extent. And I have not heard anything with regard to any threat of litigation. The only thing that I have been informed from the current owner is, and that's through his attorney, is that he doesn't want the property. He wants to sell the property to the city. And I, in looking through the records of the city, did find something a number of years ago where the city did look at possibly acquiring the property for passive use. And there was something in the DNR file which did indicate the DNR's opinion that that would be a good use of the property. Again, I had mentioned that in order to use the property for anything, because it was a landfill, it does have to be approved by the Wisconsin DNR. So somebody can't just decide to have, you know, use it for, for, if we acquired it or if we were going to put a path or something on it, we wouldn't just be able to, to go ahead and use it. We'd have to have their permission to do so. And the current owner, also, if that person was interested in maybe checking out whether or not he could develop the property, would also have to go through the DNR. And I have not heard that from the attorney, that the person is, you know, going to be looking at developing the property on his own. But just so that everyone is aware, if he would choose to look into developing the property, he would be working through the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. And that would activate an investigation. Obviously, I don't know that it would activate any remediation requirements or anything like that, depending on, you know, if he decided he wanted to do something. There are, as I mentioned, the only reason that perhaps the city would consider voluntarily acquiring it is because then there would be control over the future use of the property to mitigate the risk of any third party trying to develop the property. But I have not heard that the owner wants to do that. They are, his attorney has been contacting me, asking for updates on what the city desires to do. Obviously, the information was provided to them about the Park Board recommendation. And certainly, I told him that before he even came to the Common Council to speak, because he, he had asked to speak to the Common Council as well, that it's not even in the plan for 10 years or, or so out. So if the council does decide that it doesn't want to do anything at, at this point and wants to send that message, well, certainly I'll be bringing back that back to the owner's attorney. And then we'll see what it is that, that they have in mind.
Alderman Grady? Yes, I have a question for Brian Tungay. A little fuzzy with all the different vision ideas going on here. Can you clarify, if 995 Brighton Drive is still in the Manasha Vision Plan for Jefferson Park?
I believe the action that was taken was to modify the language in there. There's still reference to it, but it's, you know, passive green space. And, and the Park Board just sort of clarified what was already in there. So their motion really was just taking the language that was already in there, is, is what the Park Board did. And they reaffirmed what was already in the vision plan. So it was, I think the language was modified some, but not completely eliminated.
Okay. I'll just go back out after my notes there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just want to clarify on the wording. Director Tungay is correct. This is done during the signed eye of the last council. And the vision plan had the area being used as frisbee golf. And the motion was actually made by Alderman Zalinski, instructed by Alderman Collier, to amend it to show the Avalon property as a flexible green space. So it wasn't removed out, it was indeed rewording it. But I am also not in favor of even looking at the property myself. But just for clarification, it wasn't taken out, it was a modified wording.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Radomski, are you familiar with this property?
I am not.
My question was going to be about the potential utilization of this, knowing that it would be only as a green space, and they were talking about some frisbee golf or a walking trail or something. I think that presently, that property is capped, in that, that cap cannot be disturbed for its use. And if it were to be cleaned up, so to speak, so that it could become that frisbee golf or the, or as a walking trail, are you familiar with anything that may have to happen with that as far as cleaning up the site? Because I think it's just full of a lot of brush and some, maybe some debris or something like that. But without disturbing that cap? And, and how much that cap might be for the surface, you know, to, to actually be able to do something with that to clean it up?
The, the DNR does have regulations regarding...
The, the DNR does have regulations regarding how to deal with old landfills. However, being unaware of the testing that has been done or if there has been testing on this site, I can't comment as far as what would be needed to clean up the site to the point where we could use it.
Yeah. Okay. So that is a big unknown for that property at this point. Thank you.
Any, Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. I understand why the city might voluntarily purchase this property. My question comes up when I think about the opportunity, um, for the owner to have a potential sale or development of that property. And then the attorney mentioned that the DNR would be involved in that. And so my question is, what are the risks to the city at that point? If there are any?
Attorney Captain?
If the owner should decide that, um, he wishes to develop it to some extent, he would have to get in touch with the Wisconsin Department of Revenue, that's correct. Um, there would be, um, some investigative work that would be required. Obviously, we don't know what that is. Uh, so that's a big unknown. Um, if there would be any remediation required because of what the owner would want to do with the property, that's an unknown as well. Um, because we don't know that the owner has any intention on doing that, let alone what is it. But, um, if there was some investigation and, um, there were, uh, there was some required remediation, uh, depending on what it was that was found, uh, an owner has an ability to seek reimbursement from anyone who caused environmental issue on a property, potentially. And of course, um, the city would also have the ability to look for parties that potentially, other parties that potentially, um, deposited whatever it is on the property. Um, and that owner would have the ability to do so.
And that is where my fear lies?
Those are all, you know...
That is where my, where my fear lies, because if you extend things out, there are a lot of unknowns. And to, um, have that property in our, um, possession mitigates any of that. Then we control what could or could not happen there, um, in the future.
Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Does anybody know what, what we're collecting for taxes on that?
Very little. I forget what the number is, but it's very little.
Yeah, because it would seem to me that with its limited use, that property couldn't have a lot of value to it either. Do you have any comments on that? Director Jacobs?
I didn't bring the information down with me from my office, so I could quick go up and go get something.
No, it's okay.
It seems like the total value is in the assessed value. I'm not sure how they came up with that. It was in the range of forty thousand. So we would be collecting...
A few thousand.
No, it's not even that. It'd be, it'd be about a thousand dollars total.
Yeah.
Something like that.
Okay.
And we should ask the accountant over there. He seemed to have the number real quick.
All right, thank you.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. What is the urgency on this decision?
Attorney Captain?
There's none that I'm aware of, other than the, um, attorney for the current owner just keeps acquiring, where's the city at? Where's the city at? Where's the city at?
And based on what I've heard this evening, I don't know that I'm comfortable making that decision yet tonight. Feel like I need to think about what I just heard and take an opportunity to ask, um, questions over the next two weeks. So I'm going to move that we, um, postpone until the next meeting.
Alderman Sevigny, did you wish to speak on the postponement?
Yeah, pertaining to... I'll just let it go. It does the same thing for me. We have no need for this property whatsoever. Park Board already told us that. I don't understand this, playing this game, setting us up for deep liability. It's nuts.
Alderman Benner?
Did the Park Board really tell us that they don't want it?
Yes. You're sitting next to one of the members.
Yeah, that's right. I have to make a question.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Alderman Nichols?
And I can, I respect the Park Board's, uh, recommendation on that. And I'm not sure, did they have an opportunity to hear from the city attorney on, um, the legalities and concerns about that particular property?
The Park Board wouldn't have been concerned about that. They would have been concerned, is there a park use for that space? That's what they were talking about.
And, and I think what we're discussing here this evening goes beyond simply a park use, uh, issue.
Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. This whole property came into play because of a park vision plan. Um, and, and the Park Board is saying that there's not a use for it, you know, if, if we're going to dwell on the, I mean, it's not the only property in the city like this. And this is going to open up a lot of doors I don't think we want opened. Plain and simple, not just on this property, but some other properties too. And the, the Park Board said they don't have a use for it. I don't think we should be looking at this anymore. Again, I, I'm still a little bit confused why it's even on the agenda. Um, but I, I mean, I, my gut feeling says just let's not even discuss this anymore if we have no, no need for the property.
Okay, we're getting a little far off on postponement or not postponement. So let's try to keep his, whoop. Okay, did you turn yours off, James?
I have a couple else talking now. She's calling out now, so I'm going to hold on.
Okay. Are you, discussion on postponement, Kevin?
It is, and my confusion just comes from the fact it's still in the vision plan for the parks. And I, I, that's where my confusion comes from. If it's still on the vision plan, they said they don't want it and it's still on the plan for the park, uh, that's my only concern. I don't necessarily disagree with, with any of the dialogue about the property itself. I just wouldn't want to...
Again, we're getting off.
Yeah, well, that's, that's kind of my...
Should we postpone it or should we move forward tonight?
I, I just, is the Park Board meeting before our next meeting?
No, second Tuesday.
No?
No.
Meet right after?
Yeah. Um, I'm going to remove my second. Thank you.
Once, once the motion is made in second and I read the motion, we need to act on that motion. So we should just take a vote and either postpone it or not postpone it, and then we'll, um, move on from there, depending on which way that vote goes. So, so there's a motion and a second to postpone and seeing no further discussion?
Do you want to take a roll call vote on this?
We probably should. So I have a feeling it's not going to be unanimous. Okay, so we'll take a roll call vote on that then, please?
Motion fails on roll call two-six.
So the motion that's on the floor is that the city has no interested in, interest in purchasing nine-nine-five Brighton Drive at this time. Alderman Taylor?
You know, the more we bring up this property, the more we hurt ourselves. And from the very beginning with the Jefferson Park Plan, master plan, uh, a lot of seasoned people in the community said, don't even talk about this property, don't even include it in the park plan. But it was included in the park plan. And the night we rolled out that, that, the master plan for Jefferson Park, and all the hard work the community put into it, all the hard work consultants put into this project, what did we get for headlines in the paper the next day? Manasha Dump Site. And it just let the positive air out of the Jefferson Park Plan. We didn't have donors coming up and saying, hey, I want to do this, I want to do that, because the dump was associated with that plan. And if we would have stayed away from it, we would have had that negativity. We've had the million dollar, multimillion dollar development with the condos adjacent to this property. Those homeowners have come up here and said, we don't want this in our backyard. We don't want, uh, to have a park in our backyard or some sort of a passive park area. So I think the council should take complete control of this property. It shouldn't go to any more commissions. And we should put this to rest and we should be quiet about this property as much as we can. Because it keeps hurting us every time we talk about it.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please? You can change it before...
You can.
So you can press the other, just press the button that you want to again and it should change.
Motion carries on roll call six-two.
Is that the way that you wanted your vote to be, Kevin?
Yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure before we went further. Okay, we have four resolutions yet. The first one's Resolution Six for a stormwater detention pond. Do we have a motion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I make a motion to adopt Resolution R dash zero-six dash eighteen memorandum of agreement for stormwater detention pond construction and maintenance between the Village of Fox Crossing, City of Manasha, Winnebago County, and the Wisconsin DOT. This references the Racine Pond as introduced by Alderman Taylor and recommended by the Board of Public Works. Sorry, Alderman Taylor, I was doing this on the plan commission.
There's a motion, a second for Alderman Zalinski, I believe, correct? Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call eight-zero.
Item two is Resolution Seven for a stormwater detention pond. Is there a motion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion at this time for Resolution R dash zero-seven dash eighteen, a memorandum of agreement for stormwater detention pond construction and maintenance between Village of Fox Crossing, City of Manasha, Winnebago County, and the Wisconsin DOT. This references the Midway Pond as introduced by Alderman Taylor and recommended by the Board of Public Works.
There's a motion, a second by Alderman Kruger. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call eight-zero.
Item number three is Resolution Eight regarding preliminary resolution declaring intent to exercise special assessment powers. Do we have a motion? Alderman Benner?
Not my favorite at this week, but I make a motion for Resolution R dash zero-eight dash eighteen, preliminary resolution declaring intent to exercise special assessment powers under Section sixty-six point oh-seven zero-three, the Wisconsin statutes for the ponds of Manasha and the cottages at Lake Park condominiums as introduced and recommended by the Board of Public Works.
Is there a second? There's a motion, a second by Alderman Kruger. Is there any discussion? Alderman Benner?
Mr. Mayor, um, Director Radomski, do you have any input as to what the linear foot may be on this one?
We are still in the process of working that out. I can get you that shortly. We have not completed final design at this point, so we do not have a linear foot.
So even though we have a resolution, we don't know what that number might be at this point?
This is the preliminary resolution that allows us to get to that next step.
Okay.
At the final resolution, we can provide that number.
Okay, thank you. Make sure you bring that.
Yep.
Alderman Sevigny, do you have something to share with the rest of us? Otherwise, item four is Resolution Nine. Do we have a motion? Oh, did I not take a vote? I'm sorry.
You're all concerned about me, Mayor.
I'm confused, yes. Okay. Well, I got confused when you stood up and started wandering around. So we do need a vote on Resolution Eight?
Motion carried on roll call eight-zero.
Item four is Resolution Nine. Do we have a motion? Alderman Grady, maybe?
Whoop, is it on? Okay. Yes, I'd like to make the motion for R dash oh-nine dash one-nine, a resolution to authorize the application of the cost share grant from Bay Lake Regional Planning Commission introduced by Mayor Marcus.
There's a motion, a second. I think Alderman Collier was first. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call eight-zero.
Item N is public comments on any matter listed on the agenda? If there's anyone who wishes to speak? Only on items that were on the agenda this evening? Seeing no one, do we have a motion to...
I adjourn.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.